It is 6:03 and the City Council is in order. And Councilman Eichner will lead us in prayer and then in the pledge.
Stand. Lord, as always, we come before you asking for your presence, asking for your guidance. We thank you, Lord, for all the good things that you have given us, for the wonderful front that came through and the one that's anticipated coming through. We just are so glad and we thank you for the blessings that you give us day by day and the opportunity to live in this great little town. And we just ask, Lord, that you be with everybody here tonight and watch over us. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the republic of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unbroken, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may notice that we have some women with us tonight in special attire from 100 years ago. And you'll hear more about that. Remember, if you're going to speak to an item on the agenda, you need to sign up and do that with the City Secretary over here to my right. Also, fortunately, I haven't had to mention this but a couple of times, but please refrain from abusive, rude, or inappropriate conduct. Let's hear our announcements of community interest.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Welcome to the council tonight. Welcome to everybody. Had a nice, cool morning, as someone said, and hopefully we can get a few more of those going forward. Just a few announcements tonight. Our movies in the park, we kicked that off last Friday, excuse me, last Saturday. And before we meet again, we're going to have two more movies next, this Saturday and next Saturday. This Saturday, we have Scooby Doo Two and next Saturday, Hocus Pocus. Lot of turnout, big turnout the other night, and these are great events and the weather is really getting cool at night, so it's fun to sit out there and have a good time. So if y'all get a chance, come on out and see the movie, it's free. Big weekend this weekend, it seems like I say that every week, because we seem to have a big weekend every week, but we've got the Kerrville Chalk Festival downtown Saturday and Sunday, right here on Peterson Plaza. I'm sure some of y'all and quite a few of you have been to it before, but it's a great event. The artwork is just spectacular. Two-day event, chalk artists from all over the state and actually all over the nation. We have a lot to come from outside of Texas. This year's festival benefits Our Lady of the Hills, so I would encourage you to come down here. It's going to be a lot of fun and a great event. And finally, we have two things coming up at the library before we meet again. One of them is a poet laureate coming this Sunday. I'm not quite sure what a poet laureate is, but I think it's a pretty big deal. Obviously, it's someone who's good with poetry. Poet Octavio Quinceanilla will be here Sunday, this Sunday, from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. He'll be reading some poetry and there will also be an open-mic session, so the guests are welcome to read their poetry, too. Now, you'll be following a poet laureate, so you might want to think twice about that. One more thing, the library is hosting a genealogy webinar on October 18th. So if you're interested in doing some research on your families, that starts at 12:00 noon. I think there's about four webinars that go on between 12:00 and 2:00. And that's being put on with the Genealogy Network of Texas. Those videos will be livestreamed, excuse me, those webinars will be livestreamed. It's also a free event, so if you want to find out about your family, come on over to the library. That'll do it.
Okay, thank you. Council, any announcements of community interest?
I'd just like to say, I appreciate what the staff and the city put out in a newspaper supplement this past week. I thought that was wonderful and I've gotten great positive comments from it.
Yeah, yeah.
What the city's got going on.
Yeah. I'm going to say in regard to that comment, the city is really seeking to be transparent through the website, the broadcast of the council meetings and other meetings, the app for the city, the Facebook page, and a lot of other ways, is seeking to be very transparent. So, you know, we have our visitors, citizens forum, and you need to sign up to speak and fill out the request form, give it to the City Secretary. On these matters, we will not discuss or take any action. It may result in something being referred to the staff. Do we have any visitors for citizens forum?
Yes, sir, we have one signed up, Bruce Stricki.
Bruce Stricki, 615 Earl Garrett. And again, I'm just here about what a great place Kerrville is and all the work that we've done this past year, to just think about that. We just ended, we just ended the fiscal year for the city. We're starting over. And we think about everything that we got accomplished this year, and I don't know how many 2050 items got accomplished this year, but I know every time I look at a city council agenda, there are a number of them that are marked, that we're working on and moving forward on. We got the zoning code updated and it's not perfect. Like, everything in life is not perfect, but it's wonderful and it's a huge improvement over what we had. We got the sign code done, and I know there are folks that are still unhappy with that, but I also know other folks are very happy with that. And we, and this amount of citizen involvement in that kind of thing, in the housing task force that is just, we're going to talk about later tonight, so I won't say anything else, Mayor. But you think about the way that this staff has brought the community together, to have the hundreds of people that were, worked in 2050, and certainly the tens of people that were involved in the review of the zoning, it might have been more than 100 in that, the sign ordinance, there were tens of people involved in that, and committees and public input through the meetings and stuff, all the different things that we're already talking about and working on that you all have on your agendas going forward, the fact that we are a regional center, the largest city between San Antonio and El Paso on I-10, and that we're being proactive. We're taking these issues that have been longstanding issues that other councils have set us up well for but haven't been able to solve, and we're actually taking on those problems and working through them and moving that forward. This is the place to be, and I can tell you, I noticed tonight that Walt Kanek and Gil Salinas are not here. And I'll bet you they're busy, because our phones are ringing about ways that we can bring moderately priced jobs to Kerrville, like we talked about in the workshop earlier today, that will be productive for our community. And we know that with the low unemployment rate that we have, what is it, 3.2%, I think the last time I checked, it might have been 3.5, that just about everybody who wants a job in Kerr County has one. It may not be the job they want yet, but they have a job. And that is something that's really positive, and Kerrville makes that happen, because we're the economic driver of Kerr County. And if you look at our housing and our workforce and everything, it's all centered in this regional center where we have great medical, great venues like the sports complex and the River Trail, the Guadalupe River. We're getting more restaurants, we're getting more things for people to do and go out and enjoy, not only the stars, but be able to shop and find different things. We have new furnishings and antiques and the stuff that Larry and the boys are doing out on the East End that is just fabulous, and bringing those new ideas that haven't been here before, bringing the things that we're missing here in town, and you all are encouraging us to do that. And I just want to thank you, you guys are great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a couple of presentations to make. Let me read this proclamation and then we'll have some folks stand up here for the presentation. Whereas after decades of public education, legislative lobbying, and public demonstrations, even in the face of what would now be called torture by women's suffrage organizations of all ages, races, and home states, Congress finally passed the Nineteenth Amendment to the U.S. Constitution, providing that the right to vote shall not be denied or bridged by the United States or any state on account of sex on June 4, 1919. Whereas the Texas Legislature had already opened voting in Texas primary elections to women in 1918 and promptly became the ninth state legislature to ratify the proposed amendment on June 28, 1919. Note, those primaries were only open to whites. And whereas Texas was a thirty-sixth and last required state to ratify, passing the legislation by just one vote, I'm sorry, Tennessee, Tennessee was the thirty-sixth and last required state to ratify, passing the legislation by just one vote on August 26, 1920. And whereas the suffragists' organizations then turned their attention to educating and encouraging women to vote by founding the League of Women Voters, and whereas the Texas League of Women Voters was founded October 19, 1919, at the St. Anthony Hotel in San Antonio, and now includes members of all genders, and whereas the local League of Women Voters, Hill Country, Texas, celebrated its fortieth anniversary in May of this year. Now therefore being resolved that the mayor and council of the city of Kerrville joined the League of Women Voters of Hill Country, Texas, in celebrating the progress and progress represented by these anniversaries and the continuing struggle to realize the dream of full equality for all citizens of our beloved nation, and encourage the local league, now over eighty members strong, in its efforts to register voters, provide nonpartisan information on the issues, and increase voter participation in every election, and call upon the citizens of Kerrville to join in recognizing and participating in this special observance. One hundredth anniversary of the women's right to vote and of the Texas League of Women Voters. In witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Kerrville to be affixed here to the eighth day of October, 2019. Now, actually, I'm going to sign it in just a minute, but I do want to make sure, when we were talking about Texas being early in ratifying the Nineteenth Amendment, I said initially, Texas was the thirty-sixth, Tennessee was. Okay, I would like for, and do we have anybody here from the League of Women Voters? If you will come, stand right here. Okay. And I am going to sign this and present it to you. Who is the president?
We don't have one, that's how eager opportunity is. We have a leadership team and you're looking at them.
Good, all right, okay.
They'll have to introduce themselves, too.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. If you would introduce yourselves, please.
Mary Ellen Summerlin.
Meg Scott Johnson.
Jeanette Ruark.
Maggie McGee.
Catherine Lee Royden.
Julie Centel.
Joanne McKenzie.
Alicia Blyett.
All right, that is great.
And we are missing Bonnie Bond.
Yeah.
Yeah, good, good. Seriously, folks, in terms of what they do in this community, in getting information out, encouraging people to participate, it is exceptional. I'm going to present this to you.
Oh, wow.
There you go, okay. Okay, if you'll come in closer, please, there we go. Right. All right, thank you. What is it? What is the picture?
Because we are not actually 100 years old, despite the disguises, and this is a picture of our four mothers and how they lived and how they got promoted to women. They were fearless protesters.
Fearless protesters, all right.
And if I could say one thing, I just wanted to thank the city for all its support. Yesterday, we had an all-day-long voter registration drive-through at the Calo Center, which was very successful, and the city helped us organize that, gave us the permission to do it, gave us the permission to have it advertised on the sign and so...
Please support everything.
Everything. We appreciate your support.
Oh, great, great.
Thank you for doing it.
Thank you very much, all right.
Thank you, all of you.
As I often say to guests who receive these proclamations, if you don't stay for all of the council meetings, you're excused. All right. This is for Fire Prevention Week. Do we have any fire personnel here tonight?
Just a few.
All right, okay, go ahead and come up, if you would. Chief Danny Smith. Tell us, tell us, name and your position in the department. So you started with me, Mayor.
Yeah.
Danny Smith, your fire chief.
All right.
Stephen Boyd, battalion chief.
Jason Lakey, fire marshal.
Billy Williams, lieutenant.
Brandon McDonald, firefighter.
Dan Floyd, driver, paramedic.
Can you read this proclamation? Whereas the city of Kerrville is committed to ensuring the safety of all those living in and visiting Kerrville, and home fires are a serious public safety concern. And whereas, according to the National Fire Protection Association, home fires killed 2,630 people in the U.S. in 2017, and fire departments responded to 3,000, 300,000, 357,000 home fires, and the majority of fire deaths occur at home. Whereas residents should make a home fire escape plan and practice at least twice a year, during the day and at night, and including children, and everyone in the home should know how to call 9/11. And in a real fire emergency, residents should get low and go under the smoke to get out quickly, and never go back inside the home for people, pets, or things. And whereas the 2019 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Not Every Hero Wears a Cape," Plan and Practice Your Escape, effectively serves to remind us that we need to take personal steps to increase our safety from fire. Therefore, I bill Blackburn, mayor of Kerrville, to hereby proclaim October 6 through 12, 2019, as Fire Prevention Week, and urge all the people of Kerrville to support the many public activities and efforts of Kerrville Fire and Emergency Services during Fire Prevention Week 2019. And witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Kerrville to be affixed here to the eighth day of October, 2019. The, I could really brag on our fire department. They're professionals, they're well-trained, they're responsive, they care about people, and we, we're lucky to have them, I'll tell you. And Danny is a great leader, not only in the fire department, but in other parts of the work of the city. So I'm going to sign this and hand it to you, and they'll take our pictures.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, for this opportunity.
Thank you all.
Thank you, guys.
Extremely exciting time for the fire department, it gives us an opportunity to get into the community and in the schools and share fire safety tips. As you read the proclamation, Mayor, this year's theme, "Not Every Hero Wears a Cape", I can't think of a more clear example of that than just a few months ago when we recognized ten-year-old Madeline Munoz, who took the tips from Fire Prevention Week and saved her entire family from fire. So it's just great to work in this community, great to work under the leadership that we have, the opportunity to.
Think about that. She was at school and heard the presentation about fire, she puts it in practice and saves her family, she's ten years old, boy. All right, let me pass this on to Chief Smith.
Thank you. Thank you, you stay safe out there, okay?
Thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for what you do for the city, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Y'all stay safe, thank you.
Now, we come to the consent agenda. The, unless council member and individual pulls one of these items, we will vote on these three together. Do I hear a motion in regard to the consent agenda?
Right, I think there's...
There was an item 4A that a citizen has pulled that wants to speak on 4A.
Oh, okay, all right, on 4A.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do we have that speaker?
I make a motion that items 4B and 4C be approved as presented.
Second.
Okay. Got a motion and second, all in favor. Okay, now, let's go back to 4A. Somebody wants to speak to that?
Peggy McKay.
Read it.
First Amendment to the Chapter 380 Economic Development Agreement between the city of Kerrville, Texas and Kerrville's Fourth on the River, Inc., related to the Arcadia Theater.
Peggy McKay, 103 West Chester, Kerrville. In Article 4A of the original agreement, it required K-4 30 days after requesting funds to first present evidence that they not only possess but control funds to pay for construction; two, to have on hand not less than 10% of the overall cost for contingency; three, evidence of the date work is to begin, and a completion date would be nice as well; four, documentation K-4 has contracts to cover not less than $2 million related to the project. All of this is removed with this amendment, and with it, a stable financial position and a demonstration that K-4 is acting in good faith in regard to the city's gift. It appears K-4 does not have those signed contracts, nor donations as the original contract required. Going into this, K-4 was gifted with the Arcadia and had no funds to begin the project, relying on donor contributions. The Calo contribution alone, $500,000, required matching funds. If those funds were not raised, K-4 would not only lose $500,000 in the matching funds, but a total of a million with the Calo contribution. To me, removing cautionary requirements in 3A weakens the agreement in the city's and taxpayers' investments. Yes, locals do contribute to the 4B tax and the hot tax as well. In Article 3, leasing the city office space at 714 Water to K-4 for a dollar a year may be a solution for inadequate restroom facilities in the Arcadia, but details of required maintenance and upkeep are weak and vague. With the addition of this Water Street lease, any additional changes and upgrades involving the balcony area and those of adjoining properties will peel away money from the original agreement, and of course, costs will necessarily increase accordingly. To cover these changes, I suspect additional amendments for changes in funds will be forthcoming. The Arcadia may be an attractive project, but the financial planning is already deteriorating, thus we have this amendment and the project is barely off the ground. Please do not combine these two projects.
Do we have anyone from K-4 to respond, or?
And I have a question about, this is an amendment, but it says at the back of that that this grant is amended with additions, and then it also goes on to say, except as amended herein, and I would defer to the attorney, the provisions of the grant agreement remain in full force and effect, so, but that's not my expertise, so...
The intent here is just to amend it as presented with those strikeouts and the additions.
And that's all?
That's it.
Yeah. Well...
Any other questions?
Thank you. Would you like, do you have any responses to Ms. McKay's?
Yes, Larry Howard, 503 Oakland Hills Lane. I will make a couple of comments, and I know that your statements, there's some concern there. Amending this agreement is splitting the two payments in half. The controls that were there for K-4's financing are still there in the EIC agreement, as written. So, the $500,000 in Calo fund money, we've raised 250 of that. So this is really more of a timing issue of funding to be able to get the construction plans done. We have to have the construction plans completed to get the bids done, to get the contract award, to be eligible to receive any of this money. What this does is grant us $200,000 of it in October of this year, and holding the remaining of it until January of next year, after the contract has been let. I think our fundraising goal to date committed is about 2.1 million, roughly, so I think we're well on our way to getting the project done.
All right, good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll make, go ahead, Judy.
I will move that we adopt the First Amendment.
Okay, I make a motion that we authorize the city manager to finalize and execute this amendment.
Do we hear a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor of this contract and amendment? Okay, it passes unanimously. All right. We come to a public hearing at 6:30. This is, and I'm going to ask Ms. McLeven if you would read that in.
Ordinance Number 2019-24, an ordinance closing, abandoning, and vacating all right, title and interest in a portion of a public right-of-way consisting of approximately 3,148 square feet of an unimproved portion of an alley that extends between G Street and this intersection with H Street and Broadway, State Highway 27. Said alley located between Water Street to the south and Broadway to the north and out of the Joseph A. Tyvez Edition, a subdivision within the city of Kerrville, Kerr County, Texas pursuant to the platte recorded in volume P, page 16 of the platte property records of Kerr County, Texas, and located within the city of Kerrville, Texas on properties known as 1701 and 1715 Broadway, finding that said portion is not required for future use as a public street, ordering, recording, providing an effective date, and providing other materials related to the subject. There is one citizen speaker signed up, however, this is a public hearing.
Yeah, sure, okay, thank you, thank you. Let me see, Mr. Cochran left because he's recusing himself from this matter because he has an interest in it, so, Ms. Hoppy?
Mayor, Council, I'll just briefly go through a few visual slides to give you an indication of where this property is located at. You can see, this is the portion of 27 that actually goes fairly north and south in this section. It is an alleyway that was dedicated in an 1890 platte that occurred there between G Street and Broadway, actually wasn't even there at that point, that was just H Street all the way across. And so, again, this is not city-owned property, this is merely an easement that overlays onto that property. So this action simply is removing the city's public right to utilize that easement, which has caused issues with traffic that's backed up on G Street and utilizes that alleyway, which is unimproved, it's essentially, it has some crushed granite, some gravel in that area, traffic that often traverses through there and comes up basically to a somewhat unsafe de facto intersection there at Broadway. We really like those intersections to be as close to a 90-degree angle as possible. So there's really two values in the city, abandoning this easement and peeling that right-of-way back. One is that, you know, that will discourage traffic from going through that area. In addition to that, the city does not have a responsibility to improve that right-of-way in any way. I will say, there is an Atmos gas line that is here, and that Atmos gas line and that easement will continue into the future.
You say an 1890 track?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay.
That's correct. You can see, this is looking what would be northwest, or northwest. You can see the kind of circle area there is basically where the de facto alley exists, and then the, where it kind of terminates essentially onto 27 and the other side.
All right, okay.
Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. I'm going to ask council, any questions, and then we'll go to speakers. Okay, okay. Do we have any speakers to this issue?
Martin Stringer.
Martin Stringer, 1115 Sidney Baker Street, Honorable Mayor, council members, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. Guess I've been in front of you enough lately to where we're getting to be old friends.
Yeah.
I wish you guys would come to my place as much as I come to yours. Okay, I've just got some questions on this. I'm kind of a new kid on the block, so some of these things that I see are kind of curious to me. The gentleman here said it was an easement, is it a right-of-way or an easement, and does the city actually own the dirt?
The city does not own, well, okay for me to answer?
Yes.
It's, it's an easement only.
City owns the dirt?
No, no, the city does not. It's a right-of-way.
Okay, so the easement, if the city abandons it, who does it revert to?
The owners on each side. Well, it's not, I'm sorry, it's, it's the city right-of-way, is that right? The owners on each side?
We're just, we're just removing our right to use it as an alley, or right-of-way.
Contiguous property owners would, would control the easement from that point. And so, with an abandonment like that, how does it transfer? Is it a quitclaim, or is there some?
We just, what we'll do is we'll file this ordinance, assuming it's passed on second reading, in the property records, and it just removes our right to use it as an alley. And whoever owns the dirt, you know, is not burdened by that easement anymore.
Are there any defects that you know of on that, on that easement?
I'm not sure why that would be relevant to, you know, an easement.
To determine whether or not there's value to the easement, monetary value to the easement to the city, and whether or not abandonment's in the best interest of the city. Are there any environmental issues with the easement, such as USTs on that old service station property?
Ms. Choppi, you want to address that?
City's not aware of any issues with the easement, it's simply an unused, unimproved alleyway.
All right, okay.
I'm an auctioneer, and I'm, I'm used to auctioning things for governmental entities. And anytime property comes up like that, if there's potential for financial gain by the city or return to the city, and the city offers, it appears to me like it ought to be offered for, for a public bid rather than just abandoned.
But it's, it's an easement, sir, the, the city doesn't own the land.
I understand, but it still has value to that person as an easement.
Only for access purposes. I mean, that was the...
Let me be clear, if, since it is an easement and the city doesn't own it, we couldn't sell it, right?
Well, no, and I think based on the platte from 1890, we, we basically accepted it, probably the county did, back in 1890, for the specific reason of, of an access easement. If we don't want to use it as an access easement, we can't assign it to anyone, we can't give that to anyone. And I think you just heard...
From, from the photo there, that's, that's not the current condition of the property. I had, I had another little question about that. The, the right-of-way now has improvements on it. I was kind of curious whether they were approved by planning and zoning, and they go through some kind of a permit and inspection process before those improvements were placed on it?
You know, again...
There are no public improvements there, there are possible that over the last 130 years that there could have been private improvements that occurred. Is the easement conveyable?
No, that's, that's what I was saying. The easement is not conveyable, we can't assign it to anyone.
That's all, questions ahead. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Anyone else on this issue?
George Perry, 1616 Glen Road. So, actually, that picture is actually the one I was asked, wondering about too, because that's not the current state of what's there, and I was just curious why we wouldn't have shown an aerial of what's currently there, because improvement or not, there's a parking lot sitting on, the top portion of that alley belongs to the landowner, so the question that he was asking is kind of relevant to whether we, we're keeping track of our processes. Is this an after-the-fact attainment of the easement? Are we asking for abandonment because, oops, we've, we've put a parking lot on it, so now we're going to ask for it? It's not that important, I just, that's, that's kind of a curious picture, is all.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yeah.
Ned Russell, tell us.
Larry Howard, 503 Oakland Hills Lane, I'm the general partner of the ownership group. There was a planning and zoning process, we did platte the whole thing, we had to build a parking lot and improvement, so we did not touch the alley. There have been no improvements in the alley, it's as it was when it was there.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Mayor, Stephen King, 242 Creekwood, I own the gas station on the corner. There's no improvements been made to that part of the alley either. It sits like it's been there for 60 years, probably. There's no gas, no tank in the ground, it was taken out 35 years or 40 years ago. No environmental issues, thanks.
Okay, all right. Okay, do I hear a motion on, well, we're not going to vote on that, it's first reading. We'll vote on it.
Yeah, we'll get a vote.
Huh?
You need a motion and a vote.
Oh, you do want a motion?
Yes.
Okay. Then, do I hear a motion regarding this item, public hearing and ordinance, ordinance number 2019-24?
I'll move that we authorize the city manager to finalize and execute the abandonment document, documentation.
Okay, do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor, let it be known by the raised hands, and it passes 4-0. And if someone would tell Councilman Cochran to return. All right, we now come to the Doyle Community Area Development Plan, and Ms. McElhanan, if you would read that in for us.
Resolution number 41-2019, a resolution adopting the Doyle Community Area Development Plan, and we do have four citizen speakers signed up.
Okay.
Yeah, so, Mr. Mayor, this has been a long time coming in terms of the planning effort. It began, actually, with, with you having a, kind of a open house over at the Doyle Community Center. We heard a lot from the neighborhood about some things they would like to see, and so we initiated, as a result of that, we're kind of invited in by the Doyle Community Center to initiate the area development plan. This is an action item out of Kerrville 2050, to do this not just in this neighborhood, but in neighborhoods citywide. So, the idea would be that perhaps one a year, or as we can take it on, we do, we do more of these. So, this is the first, and we're glad to present it tonight after extensive public input. And I'm going to call on Mark Bowers and Monica Hyde to present the plan to you all tonight.
Okay, good.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the Kerrville City Council. Again, my name is Mark Bowers. I'm a urban designer and planner with the firm Kimley Horn, and the project manager for the Doyle Community Area Development Plan. We're pleased to be here this evening to share with you many of the ideas we heard from the community, and our recommendations on how to implement those ideas going forward. So, as a part of the presentation, we'll give you a plan overview, we'll give you an overview of, snapshot of the demographics for the Doyle area, we'll share with you the stakeholder input, interviews, and open houses that took place. Again, something that we'll always repeat to you is, at the end of the day, we're looking to develop the community's vision and not the consultant's vision. So, we've gone through a process of listening in the community, bringing ideas back, making sure that we're setting the gauge in the right place and direction forward. We'll share with you the framework plans that came out of that, that were shared with the community, and then the overall implementation plan, and answer any questions that you have. So, as for the plan overview, I guess, number one, just what is an area development plan? So, essentially, that plan is one that establishes the vision or goals of the stakeholders of a community or of an area for a particular part, and a coordinated approach for achieving the vision that's led or supported by the stakeholders. It focuses in more detail than possible during a citywide comprehensive planning process. We're able to really focus in on the key areas within the boundary of the neighborhood. It identifies area needs and gets stakeholders involved and engaged in describing what they'd like to see moving forward, and hopefully building upon that so that they're a part of implementing the plan as it moves forward. It serves as the basis for creation of city programs, incentives, and/or special districts that are important to achieving the vision, and helps stakeholders focus on a common goal and work together to implement their desired improvements for their neighborhood. So, this, this plan is a result of the Kerrville 2050 Comprehensive Plan, and really supports a few key areas of that Comprehensive Plan. It focuses on community and neighborhood character. If you'll recall, Guiding Principle number six from Kerrville 2050 was to celebrate and honor the character of each neighborhood and its culture, revitalize neighborhoods, and create gathering places within them while avoiding the displacement of citizens in their cultures. So, that was one of the overriding things we kept in mind as we were working with the community. And then, action item 6.7 under that Guiding Principle was to create neighborhood area plans appropriate to the uniqueness of particular parts of the city. So, just how this fits into the bigger picture, you have the Kerrville 2050 Plan, which is represented by the image on the left, and it's the citywide plan that sets the overall community direction. It establishes a vision, guiding principles, and development pattern, and action steps for employing, and implementing that overall vision, whereas an area plan then applies that direction to specific areas. So, it establishes a more detailed vision or identity for an area, establishes policy direction for that area, identifies needed capital improvements as well as action items and priorities for implementing that vision for the area. The follow-on piece to this is the implementation of that area plan, which implements the priorities and, and tools guided by the area plan. It identifies public investment, private investment, facility design, and continues that community involvement process, again, in getting the community engaged in implementing the plan. So, the overall goals for the Doyle Area Plan were to preserve, number one, the existing neighborhood character, to encourage investment to stabilize the neighborhood and prevent deterioration and loss of property value, to identify stakeholder priorities, to provide for infill development and redevelopment that is consistent with existing community character, and avoid placing unnecessary burdens on owners wishing to make improvements to their properties. So, the overall planning process is, as Mark McDaniel shared with you, we kicked it off in May of this year, at least the consultant team became involved in May of this year, and started the process off with stakeholder interviews. Again, the first thing we always want to do is come in and listen to what folks in the community have to say about their, their community and the things that they envision for the future, but also, what are their concerns and what needs to get fixed? And about that same time, in May, we had Community Open House Number One. It was really an open-ended session where we shared maps and aerial photos of the area. We didn't come in with the plan and say, you ought to do this or that. We said, what are the infrastructure concerns? Are there drainage issues? Are there roadway issues? What other types of improvements do you want to see in your community? We came back in August of this year with some additional stakeholder interviews to continue to verify what we had heard in that first round. We had Community Open House Number Two. At that open house, we shared preliminary direction, we shared what we had heard in the first meeting, the things that we had developed in response to that. Number one, to find out, did we listen correctly? Did we hear the right things? Were there things that we needed to change, again, to make sure that we're reflecting the community's vision for their neighborhood? September 2019, we came back with the framework plans we're going to be sharing with you this evening, as well as the preliminary direction on the implementation strategies, got community input on that, answered questions related to that. And again, that was one more opportunity to say, are we getting it right, are we listening correctly? And now, here we are, October of this year, with this council presentation and potential adoption of the area and development plan. So, on the demographic summary, there's a few key things that we wanted to point out. So, number one, as you look at this graph on this particular slide, the green bars indicate 2010 demographics, the blue bars represent 2018, and the yellow bars represent projections for 2023. So, the population of the area currently is about 1,550 people. You'll see that there's not a huge increase in population, there's not a lot of greenfield areas, there's not a lot of redevelopment with higher density. What we're really seeing is a pattern where the population is growing, either through an increase in population and households, or some infill development that's starting to occur. The overall households have been fairly stable, at just less than 1,600 households, and of those, about two-thirds of the households contain families. And it's interesting, because you look at the owner occupied versus renter occupied, and it's about 50/50 in the community. It's slightly increasing towards owner occupied as the projection going forward, but it's been relatively stable. The, the overall household size, average household size, right now, we're at 2.7 people per household, we're expecting that to increase, so that's part of the reason we're seeing the population increase in the area, is the number of people per household. The overall income within the area is less than the overall Kerrville household income. About 58% of the, the household income is less than $24,000 per year, but you can see the range of income, but that, that 58% represents kind of the gold and the blue across the top of the pie chart. Age in the community is, is relatively young, it's younger than your general population within Kerrville. Currently, the median age is 37.4 years, but again, what I'll point out on this chart is that the highest, at about 14% of the population, is between 25 and 34 years old. And correlating to that, we believe, is you see the 0 to 4, all the way up to the 15 to 19, so a lot of, a lot of those folks are families that have children in their homes. Race, ethnicity, just before you jump to conclusions on this, so essentially, as you talk about race, in the way that the census tracks race, is they have you identify as to whether you're white, black, American Indian, Asian, and Hispanic origin is not considered a race in the census. So, Hispanic origin may be, you may be a person who identifies as white, or somebody who's black that is of Hispanic origin, is an example. So, essentially, the overall population shows at about 67% white in 2018, but note, at the bottom of the chart, it says 218% Hispanic origin is 52%, or 57.2%. So, we believe a lot of the folks that identified as white, but it could have been black or American Indian as well, could be of Hispanic origin. 10% of the community is black. You'll also see that there are some people, and some that came up to us and said, I identify as more than one race. There's about 3% that say two-plus races. So, I'm going to ask Monica Hyde of Prologue Planning to come up and talk through some of the things that we heard at the stakeholder interviews and open houses.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council, also the community, because they were a very important part of this project and everything that, that our team has worked on in Kerrville so far, so we appreciate their support and input as well. So, if we, we wanted to focus in a little bit on the stakeholder input that we see, received throughout this process, and I'll start with the interviews. The purpose of the stakeholder interviews that we conducted was to, to get some special knowledge from people who had some unique insights and perhaps connections to the Doyle area. We used a study process that involved two different sets of interviews, seven sessions total, some of them were one-on-one, and some of them were small groups, and about 15 individuals in, in total were, were interviewed. They were residents of the area or representatives of some, some of the institutions in the Doyle area for the most part. And these early inputs and observations were really important to us as we began preparing for our first open house. for our first open house. The open houses had a unique function as well. We like to use them to advise the community of what we're what we're all about in the study process, as well as gathering input from them on issues and priorities. And then, once we have some concepts drafted up, we like to present those to the community so that they can review and give us feedback on those. We conducted three different open houses as part of this process, end of May, first of August, end of September. And I wanted to just kind of run through the the topics that we went over at each of those open houses. And as Mark said, the first one was fairly fairly broad in terms of its scope. We kind of cast a wide net out to the community to say, you know, what is it that that is of concern to you here in the Doyle area? We started by presenting a little bit of information on Kerrville 2050. We we had asked for input on facilities and infrastructure, priorities for the future under several different categories, as you can see there, everything from infrastructure to capacity building. And in each of our open houses, we always put a board up at the end. It's general comments or additional comments or something like that, so that if there's a topic that we haven't hit on in our pre-prepared material, then there's always an opportunity for people to bring up other topics. At the second open house, based upon what we heard at the first one, we're able to kind of narrow down and focus a little bit more. We had actually more stations at the second hearing. We had a station on the background. We had a dedicated Carver Park station. We had one for the Doyle Community Center. The Build Health Initiative was able to join us to kind of let the community know about what they would like to be doing in the in the near future with with the population there. We had a board on priorities that asked about specific issues related to infrastructure, neighborhood character, community building, and housing and the economy. And then, at this point in time, we had, based upon what we had heard from staff very early on, and then also the input at the interviews and the first open house, we had a draft set of framework plans, and those talked about or addressed in graphic form because they're maps, streets and sidewalks, stormwater drainage improvements, connectivity, and then again, as I said, an opportunity for comments on new topics we might not have asked about specifically. Then at our last open house, which was only a couple of weeks ago, we were we were ready to articulate in graphic and in implementation form what we felt we had heard from the community, what was the most important to them, and and what steps we saw that could be taken in order to achieve that community's vision. And Mark will talk about each of those plans in a little bit more detail later, but they did, again, consist of streets and drainage, connectivity, which was sidewalks and trails, neighborhood character, which is neighborhood identity, you know, the Doyle area as a unique neighborhood, open space, potential infill housing locations and types. And then we had several boards that that reflected the implementation plan, which is the strategy for achieving all those things that people said they would like to see in the in the coming years, and, like I said, a general comments board every single time. So I wanted to give you just a bit of a summary on the the major points that we heard from the stakeholders, and this is really, you know, this is this is the things we heard over and over and the things that we we seem to feel were most important from the community. First of all, their number one concern is the condition of the infrastructure in that neighborhood. They they think that the operations at the City Yard are not not compatible with what's going on in the rest of the neighborhood because it is largely a residential area. They would like to see Carver Park improved and maintained to the same standard as other parks in Kerrville. They would like to see the Doyle Community Center because it is such an important feature within that neighborhood, the building and the grounds both to be enhanced and upgraded. They do want to maintain the overall character of the Doyle area, so, you know, the residence residential stock is relatively small and all the the commercial is along the, you know, the major, more major roadways. There is a desire on the part of community members to see greater participation, particularly from younger people and newer residents, and this is something that was said over and over by the people who had been in the neighborhood a long time. They really would like to get new residents and younger folks to the table with everyone. One of the things that was pointed out was that there are properties in the neighborhood that are not being properly maintained, and that's affecting the the properties near them. And it was noted that some of the problem may be that there are members within the community that are simply unable to do as best as they might because of their age, their disability, or perhaps limited resources. There was a thought that there ought to be more housing options within the neighborhood, but so more of a variety and different housing types, but still harkening back to maintaining the general character that's already present. And then there was a preference for local or mom-and-pop type businesses in the area as opposed to larger chain stores and that sort of thing. And so as we developed the implementation plan, we started, we tried to address all of those major issues with specific action items, action steps to achieve the ultimate vision. Okay?
So as we built the plan based upon those issues and the input that we got from the stakeholders, really, these plans were developed into three separate frameworks, and I'll walk through each of them at a high level with you, but these were really, from a locational standpoint, identifying some of the improvements and the types of activities that folks wanted to see in the neighborhoods that then are detailed and quite a bit more detailed through the implementation matrix. So one of the framework plans is streets and drainage. We heard a lot of comments about the infrastructure within the Doyle neighborhood. So what this plan really does is looks at completed street improvements, but also ranks all of the streets in the neighborhood based on their paving condition index. And what that does is allows the city to go a step further with identifying specific needs by street based upon that ranking and come up with implementation strategies on how to make improvements on a case-by-case basis on each of the streets. It identifies locations for potential traffic calming measures. For the most part, that's along Paschal, and it identifies areas for potential drainage improvements. We understood that there were some localized flooding issues. Essentially, that's the bluish-gray circle area that shows up on the map. The connectivity framework, just some of the highlights again. It identifies potential sidewalks and shared paths. Our understanding was there was not a desire to have a sidewalk on both sides of every street in the community, but that there was a desire to make connections between key parks, open spaces, institutions within the neighborhood. So this overall framework identifies how that could be accomplished, potential for bike lanes, and potential for connections to the future River Trail. This is a great opportunity for the Doyle community to be tied in to the rest of the city through the River Trail system going forward. So there's some highlights there, identifying some of the looks and the way those types of connections could be made. And then finally, the neighborhood character framework identifies potential neighborhood identity nodes. Monica mentioned that we did hear that there was a desire for the Doyle community to have a distinct identity that people could identify with. That could be through some special elements that are small architectural features or signage features that just start to identify the area as the Doyle community, and that it's something special and something to be observed as you're going through it, or it could be as simple as sign toppers on some of the streets. The potential new open space and landscape buffers at the City Yard, Monica touched on that, that was a very key issue that came up that we think could go a long way in in making some improvement to the predominantly residential areas across the street. And then potential infill housing locations are identified with dashed yellow lines. Those are essentially vacant lots where there's a potential to come in, but we we actually have some images of the types of housing that folks wanted to see. They they don't want to see a totally new development type. They want to see housing that's compatible, newer housing, compatible, same style and character, size as the houses that exist in the community. And then finally, Carver Park, potential enhancements that will continue under evaluation, additional security lighting, additional parking, splash playground upgrades, extended splash playground hours, restroom improvements, basketball pavilion improvements, Theodore Martin commemorative feature, ball field fence, entry feature signage, and pest insect treatment program within the park. And the issue we understood there is there's ants when people are having picnics in the area. So there were a lot of a lot of interest in in Carver Park. So to round this out, Monica will go through an overview of the implementation plan.
All right, so so once it's fairly agreed upon what it is that the community would like to become, then the important thing is how do we find ourselves getting there? And again, just a reminder that the implementation plan, as well as the framework plans, are all based upon what we heard from stakeholders and the interviews from the community at the open houses, and then even backing backing up another step at the Kerrville 2050 Comprehensive Plan, a number of the items on the implementation plan were drawn from the Kerrville 2050 Plan and modified to fit Doyle. So we started just sort of by refining the issues that the community presented to us and organizing them into seven different categories for purposes of laying out the implementation plan. The first was infrastructure, and it had several subheadings under it, streets, sidewalks, and trails, streetlights, stormwater and drainage, and then services, which has to do with things other than infrastructure. That's where the issue of checking with the internet providers to see if things could be speeded up a little bit, that was one of the items underneath that section of the implementation plan. Neighborhood character has to do with history and a sense of place for the Doyle neighborhood. People are very, very proud of the heritage of that area, and they want to share it with the rest of the community. Several of them mentioned to us that there were perhaps eight or nine different historic sites within the Doyle neighborhood that probably many people are not even aware of. So they really are proud of that, and they want to get that that word out. The other thing is, you know, property maintenance is a sensitive issue there, and so that's another thing that reflects either either well or poorly upon a neighborhood, so they would like to tackle that as part of the implementation plan. Parks and open space was another category, the Doyle Community Center itself, community building and community relations, so that's, you know, neighborhood connections and that sort of thing, and then housing and economics. So those are the seven topical areas that the implementation plan is laid out by. And here is just a shot of one page out of the out of the implementation plan. It's much longer. I have it here in my hand, and I know the campus has a copy of it. So it's about 25 pages like this, so it's got some pretty good detail in it for moving forward and helping the staff and the community to track progress as as things go forward. But you'll see that we started the whole matrix with a with a reference back to the Kerrville 2050 Action Item, Guiding Principle and Action Item, that had to do with creating these neighborhood plans. But the first item under infrastructure, for example, the Guiding Principle, which is sort of the general overall concept, is to evaluate existing conditions on Paschal Street, including speeds, pedestrian issues, and enforcement, and create a plan for improved safety. The first action item underneath that, so as, you know, as you move in and get more specific, is to seek to reduce through truck traffic, dual axle, and commercial buses on Paschal Street. So it has to do with improving safety largely in that particular portion of the Doyle neighborhood. Then you move over to the next column, which is timing, and we have four categories there, and I'll talk to you about them in just a second, what each of them means, but this would be a short-term action item, so this is something that could that the city could begin working on pretty much right away. You'll see the relative public sector cost is reflected as a single dollar sign, and again, I will show you in the next slide what that means, but that, if you see a single dollar sign, that means it's a relatively low-cost item, mostly because it's going to depend a lot on staff as a resource to get the action done. And then the final column has to do with responsible parties, so who's going to be involved in achieving this action item? So you go from the general concept to the more specific action step, to the when, and the how much, and the who's who's responsible. So that's kind of how the whole thing is laid out, and this, as I can't remember if I said this a minute ago or not, but this is very, very similar to the way we did the Kerrville 2050 Plan, so it should look familiar to folks. Now, when we look at those issues of timing and public sector costs, you have four different categories underway, and there are already items underway that are listed in the in the implementation plan. Short term, which is in a zero-to-five-year timeframe, midterm, five to 10 years, and long term, 10 years and beyond, because you really do have to plan that far out because a lot of these items are very expensive. So you have to, you know, you have to have to prioritize these, you have to budget for these, so you really, it is really not too much to be thinking that far ahead. And in terms of relative public sector costs, as you can see, I mentioned that the $1 sign is fairly low cost because you're probably going to be using mostly staff resources to achieve that. $2 signs are actions that that probably are going to require some sort of a study like the one that that we've undertaken to get us here this evening. Those could cost you, let's say, up to $150,000. The $3 signs is projects that you may have to actually acquire land or do some construction, so those are going to take more money, so that so we've got those between $150,000 and a million. And then the really high-ticket items are represented as $4 signs because they could cost an excess of $1 million. So you see how you have to mix and match your your priorities with your available resources in order to determine what you're going to tackle first. And so that's sort of how that works. And as I said, the the plan is much longer than, you know, just the the excerpt that I showed you. But but I'll also say that whenever we put the we put the draft implementation plan together and send it over to the city for review, there were, I I really felt like we got pretty much everything anybody said that was actionable on the on the preliminary list. So and then I was very pleased at how how many of those items made the final list. And so so I think I think your 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 staff is very ambitious and very willing and and very committed to seeing something happen in this area, and many of the items are short-term. So I think that's I think that's great. And what you'll want to do with this plan, just like you're going to want to do with your with your comprehensive plan, is take a look at it after a period of time and say, hey, how are we doing? Were some of these items that we thought were short-term probably more items that need to be moved out a little bit further? Are there items that were long-term that can be moved forward? So just that sort of thing, just like you do with any any kind of project you're doing at home, you, you know, it's the same approach that you take with those sorts of projects. So I I know you've already revisited some of the work that you've already done, as as one of the earlier speakers said, so I I feel confident that that's going to happen on this project as well. So that's everything we have to say. We're prepared to take questions before you move on to your action, should you have any.
Okay, Council?
Can I make a comment now?
Yeah, sure.
I want to just really thank you as someone that went to each of the open houses. I just was taking a list of the things on personal conversations that I had, and you remember at the last meeting was the first time I had heard anyone bring up ants at Carver Park. And then when I was looking through the plan and I saw that, you know, you were revising up to the last minute, you were listening, you were adding, you know, and I would like to compliment the city from the time of the first meeting and hearing the first thing that citizens said. I've seen the city already take action items before this plan was was even adopted, adding the umbrellas, if you look at all of the improvements the city is already doing. I had a personal conversation with one of the residents who was concerned about the property across the street from her home and the owner not maintaining that property, and Donna Boyer made call after call and visit and really worked to get that cleaned up so that the appearance of that largely unimproved but has has some structure on it, but not a home. Anyway, that that was cleaned up, and that's next to the Glory Garden, so that, you know, those things that I've just seen in my time of of starting with you guys on this plan and the people I've talked to when I was campaigning, just talking to citizens that live close to the City Yard and hearing them talk about the dust and the dirt that they had to sweep out of their homes, and seeing that on the plan and just saying, hey, everything that I've heard, plus so much more is on there, and I'm just one person, but I just, you know, what you said about not your plan, but the community plan is just really evident to me, and I'm very grateful for the work that y'all have done.
Is that good?
I would just like to also, I'd like to thank the city, but I would also like to thank all of those who are here, who were a part of the input for this and came to the open houses. We have board members here, we have community members. If you are one of those, would you raise your hand just so we can see who you are? Thank you all. We just really appreciate it, and as we said before, this is your plan, and and I think you guys have, you you've not, you have not put yourself in there and said, this is what we need, 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 and I really appreciate that. Thank you.
I would just ditto all of that, and then I-
I would just ditto all of that, and then I do want to thank the neighbors and the residents, because you took your time to come meet with us, and the city staff did, I think, did a great job in trying to handle the comments and record all of that so we could have 25 pages of good feedback. And in the meantime, I think we made some relationships that we may not have had before, at least I can speak for myself, so I'm extremely happy to be working on this, and I'm looking forward to seeing some of these things happen. And thank you for your good reporting.
And I think it's important to say, too, that this is the first of many, and so it's exciting to see what this can do for our town.
Again, I express real appreciation both for Mark and the staff and what you've done as consultants and the citizens that have been involved. I've been involved for more than 20 years in the Doyle area, and what I see in this is addressing questions I've heard over the years and desires, and so that is very, very encouraging. I do have one small correction, and it's on page 13, and it talks about Theodore Martin and the Doyle Community School. At that point, it was the Doyle School.
Doyle School?
Yeah. Okay. Okay. We have speakers to this item?
George Broody.
George Broody, 1616 Glen Road, and I'll just use Ms. Segerman's term, ditto to the thanks you guys are all putting in. I mean, the process was good. I view it a little bit different, probably. I see it less, as it's played out, I see it less as a plan and more of a long-overdue fulfillment of promises made in the past to a neighborhood that's been basically neglected. Couple of examples of that would be the Theodore Martin marker, which I guess was promised when the pool was taken out, so we're now going to get around to it, that's great. The other, in the bigger kind of scheme of things, is the streets. I would guess that there are streets in that neighborhood that haven't been touched since they were first laid down, and it's not so much that we're giving the community something as much as we're picking up our responsibility that's owed, and that's great. I mean, it's finally happening. The concern, the biggest concern I have is one that I had in the comprehensive plan. I had emailed back and forth with Ms. Clarkson, and I appreciated that, was the whole concept of involuntary displacement, and the plan as it's presented doesn't really address that. At the last open house, which I think was only the second one that I went to, but asked questions about the neighborhood empowerment zones that's being contemplated as being used, and it was said that that would give the ability to sort of cap property taxes. Looking into it, it's not really what it's designed to do. It actually is designed to invest in the neighborhoods in ways that theoretically will help the neighborhood by giving it the housing options that you're talking about, but it will also raise the, that investment in the housing is going to raise the values, and unless there's a true cap in the neighborhood empowerment zones, I guess have a limit on that, so you can only cap it for a certain number of years. There are methods to do it, and I would hope that you would investigate those before implementing that aspect of it, keeping in mind, as I'm sure you will with your housing study. They showed a graph up there. He pointed out 58%. Well, 67% of the population in that neighborhood is less than 34,000, okay? That's household income. That does not get you more than, what, $8.50 a month in rent? So if you are going to bring in housing that's more than that, then you're actually going to put that pressure on the current residents there in their housing costs. And if you don't implement some sort of protection against that, you're not helping against the gentrification, you're actually speeding it up. And so I would encourage you to, not like you did with the comprehensive plan, make that change before moving forward with any of this, to implement something that addresses that, because otherwise, like I say, it's unintended, but it's still consequences, and they're not good. So, thanks.
Let me, I'm going to make a quick comment. Let me make a quick comment, and then I'd like to, Mark, to clarify that last issue. Mr. Broody, I know you have a real heart for that area, you're invested in that area, and I agree with you that there have been broken promises over the years, and I really believe that we're going to see a plan that is good for the area and really addresses some longtime concerns. The other thing I would say in regard to the streets, you're right about the streets not having been cared for properly, but just before we came into this meeting tonight, we had a presentation in regard to street maintenance and talk about the Doyle area and addressing that, as well as, you know, other issues of sidewalks and so forth. So, Mark, would you make a comment, if you would, about the displacement issue?
Yeah, so gentrification is always a concern with neighborhoods like the Doyle Neighborhood. We've seen it through the years in other communities where there wasn't as much focus on trying to prevent gentrification, and unfortunately, what we saw through the '60s and '70s, there were whole populations, Little Mexico in Dallas, where my mom grew up, is an example, where it is now uptown in Dallas, Texas. So it's a problem. Through the years, communities have focused back in. I was able to work in the Joppie community of Dallas, which was a freedman's community on the south side of Dallas, along the Trinity River, and incorporating some similar programs and really starting to get an effort to get some infill housing and create a stabilization of that particular neighborhood, and the same types of improvements. It was a very similar process to this. As we've talked about gentrification, one of the tools in that toolkit is the neighborhood empowerment zone. And essentially, I guess the way it's labeled in creating the zone, a municipality may create a neighborhood empowerment zone covering a part of the municipality if it determines the create, creation of the zone would promote several things, but one of the key things is affordable housing. And there have been a number of communities that utilize this tool to create that affordable housing. Is it by itself the guarantee? No, but there are a lot of, there's a lot of leeway that the city has in establishing that NEZ, that neighborhood empowerment zone, to set some of the rules associated with that. So that, it's my understanding that there can be some requirements that properties be affordable housing, rental properties be affordable housing at affordable rates once those are established. So what we've done through this process is identified tools that we had not identified previously, and the specific application of those tools will be investigated further with city staff, with the city attorney, to see what you can actually do. And we're also interested in hearing somewhat what the housing study says in ways to increase that affordable housing. So we think you've got some good tools in the toolkit here.
Thank you. Ms. Clarkson?
Well, George, or Mr. Broody, I just wanted to thank you for opening that dialogue, both at the meeting and then following that, and I really did listen to what you had to say about the, especially, I think more of our conversation was about the neighborhood empowerment zone. And so I also talked to city staff about that and really wanted to wrap my hands around, my head around what that meant. And what I learned, you know, that that means is that this is a tool, but this is a tool that we get to look at and make it work for our community in a way that we want it to work and enhance the community and not displace the residents and not allow for developers to come in and get, you know, tax breaks or anything like that, but that's the next step, and I think that's a very important step, and I think it needs to be considered very carefully. But I want to thank you for drawing my attention to that and helping me to ask some more questions about that. And thank you for the, also for the explanation.
Okay, speakers?
I live at 501 McCullough Ranch Road, and I'm the board chair for the Doyle School Community Center, and so that's what's brought me here today. First of all, I want to thank you all for us being able to be, be able to do this development plan. It was a privilege to meet the city staff and to learn more about our community. We thought we knew a lot, but we've learned more through this process. Through, you know, through each meeting, we had upwards of 50 people there at each meeting, which meant to me that people care a lot about our neighborhood. It was done in a very focused and an active manner. It was not sit and listen or sit and discuss, it was actually walking around and talking to people. It was an excellent opportunity for everyone to be able to talk to each other. You know, the Doyle Neighborhood is a very unique neighborhood. It's an asset to this entire community, because it's one of the few communities, or few neighborhoods in our community that still has some of the founding families of Kerrville still living there. And so it's definitely a unique community that needs to be preserved but also improved. And listening to the citizens of that neighborhood, I think, made it so that any things that may have been going on undone in the last few decades, and my family's been involved in that neighborhood since the early '70s, so, you know, I've kind of watched that community evolve. The focused ideas are all what I perceive as enhancements. There's nothing extravagant in any of the plan, and it's really nothing that any neighborhood in Kerrville may already have, but certainly should have. It's all safety-related, just about. I mean, it's light, so people can see when they're on the streets, it's sidewalks, it's slowing down traffic on Pascal. It's things that will keep that, and as we said, a young community, keep them safe. So I just want to, once again, just thank you for this opportunity to be the first neighborhood that gets to do this plan, and I just ask that you will adopt the plan. It's a good one. Thank you.
Ms. Tally Foose, let me ask you something. Was it your mother who was the principal of the Doyle kindergarten?
She was.
And is your father the Fred Tally they named Tally Elementary for?
It is.
Okay.
I learned all that through this process. It's just been, thank you for that visit we had that day. It was great.
Okay.
Clinton Thomas Jr.?
Clinton Thomas Jr., 705 10th Street, Kerrville, Texas. You know, I've been a citizen of Kerrville, the county, and also the city over the last 18 years, and I began to see things, and it was years back, I would say about 2004, I would be in the Doyle community, because I would go to church there, and I would see a few things, and I'd say, you know, I would wonder if the city, if I could talk to somebody in the city and see if they could address some of the problems that I saw. And I think that that day has come, you know, and I'm really impressed with the city council members and the department managers and, you know, Mr. Bauer and Mrs. Hyde, I believe her name is, but just everybody that came out, you know, I've seen how we engage the Doyle community together. Sure, there's going to be times when you don't know if those promises will be fulfilled, and I've heard that side of it as well, but I'm looking for it. I'm hoping, and just like Tally said, some of these things are just things that needed to be done, and I see them being addressed, and I'm very thankful. And I just want to say thank you again.
And thank you for being a board member.
Okay.
Reverend Alan Noah?
Alan Noah, 710 Pascal, Honorable Mayor, council members, city manager and staff. I was invited to come tonight to say something on behalf of this process, and I've been sitting there with missed emotions as I've listened to the comments that have been made. It was my privilege to serve on the 2050 Comprehensive Planning Committee, and I was delighted that this community was chosen, the Doyle community was chosen, as kind of the springboard for this project. But I'm most delighted that it gave voice to the community that had been previously voiceless. In a city our size where polarization, isolation has been the historical model, this council and city leadership has taken a huge step in inviting people to the table and giving them voice. Thank you for hearing not only with your ear, but with your heart.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the speakers signed up.
All right, okay. Any further comments or discussion? Are we ready to vote?
Ready to vote.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve this resolution number 41-2019, adopting this wonderful plan.
My second.
All right, we've got a motion, second. All in favor, if you'd like, to be known by the raised hands? Okay, thank you. It passes unanimously.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
A quick personal word on that. Back in 2003, a group of us worked with the Calhoun Foundation to purchase the Doyle School from KISD. You know, they couldn't give it away, so it was, you know, full market value, and to turn it into a community center, I see some exciting things happening. Okay, Sherry?
Resolution number 42-2019, a resolution adopting the Kerrville Housing Study and Strategic Plan 2019 for the city of Kerrville, Texas. And we have three citizen speakers sign up.
This plan is an action item identified in Kerrville 2050, and the plan evolved over a nine-month process, including the formation of the mayor's task force, workforce housing task force, and the engagement of some expert housing consultants. The adoption of this plan is recommended by the task force. Some of those members are here this evening, and were here earlier for the presentation. Since a full presentation was made at today's workshop, Steve Spilett, president of Community Development Strategies, will give a brief recap of the Kerrville Housing and Strategic Plan 2019.
Hello again, Steve Spilett, president of CDS Community Development Strategies. So I will very quickly do an abbreviated version of our presentation from earlier. As I said, as Sherry said, this was building upon the directive from the 2050 Plan and building upon the research and analysis that had been done during that effort. I'm just going to hit a couple highlights from our research and analysis and the recommendations that will be put forth in the plan. Just to recap, we studied intensely the economy and demographic trends of Kerrville and its implications for housing. Probably the most important thing that emerged from some of that analysis, both from the data and the interviews with employers and a lot of folks in the, who were involved in housing in Kerrville, was that Kerrville is a very, when it comes to workforce housing, which was the emphasis of this effort, that Kerrville has very moderate incomes. That is your, you don't, your workforce is, has a lot of lower and, on a global basis, lower in moderate income, folks working here. 52% of your under 65 households have incomes under $50,000 a year, so that has big implications for the kinds and prices of housing that are needed. So that has big implications for the kinds and prices of housing that are needed. Some of, it was very important for us to understand the economy here, to know where housing, not where it's been, where, where it is now, and where it's going. The growth sectors of your economy that are, are active now, now that your employment is growing again in the last couple of years, are construction and manufacturing, those have predominantly what we would consider middle-income wages, between, say, $40,000 and $75,000 a year. And then you have a lot of growth in retail and accommodations, which have generally lower wage profiles, sometimes much lower than $50,000, down to what would be considered generally low income, even though they're working. So when it comes to this demand and supply of findings, I want to highlight rental housing first. Basically, this, this market is, at all price levels, extremely tight. There's very, very little available, and so new rental housing is needed. There are over 200 units that are now or are going to be soon under construction. So that will address some of it, but those are our market rate units, not, not units for low and moderate income households, which, which do need additional supply. Want to note that the census data, the most recent census data that we had indicated that there are 75, or 750 approximately rental households, renter households in Kerrville that are housing cost burdened. That means that they are spending at least 30% of their gross income on housing, and that's considered excessive of a federal standard, is 30%. And so those folks really need another housing option for them, another rental housing option for them to be able to handle their, their household finances better. So that's the emphasis of rental housing there for for-sale housing. The supply of houses under, that sell for under $200,000, which is really sort of the, for, for moderate and middle-income households that are looking to buy, that's the price range they need, but that, that supply has been shrinking rapidly. And those folks not only have to compete for a very limited supply of that kind of housing, it's often not in great shape. And there's competition from investors who are also in the market and who can pay cash, whereas these other folks, these workforce, moderate income workforce households are having to use, they use mortgage financing, and there's a lot more paperwork and other things like often home inspections and so on that would otherwise be involved. So they're not in a great position to compete for those homes. You do have over 700 single-family lots in development, and some of those maybe, some of those lots may end up being for homes that are more in the price range that, that is needed, low 200,000s. Ideally, we'd even like to get down even cheaper. Here's just a quick graphical illustration of how the supply of homes in that price range have been decreasing from 2011 through 2018. So you can see it was a big, big drop. Want to note that we, as part of our research, conducted an employee survey. So a survey that was, went out through the employers, you know, in Kerrville to directly reach the workforce that we were trying to understand the, whose housing demand we were trying to really get our arms around. And so we got about 750 respondents for that, so that was a great sample for this size of town. Just a couple key findings from that. People generally found the city of Kerrville and the immediate environs to be a very desirable place to, to have their homes. So that indicates folks, the, the folks who are living elsewhere likely would probably consider moving here if they, if they were interested in moving their household, if housing is available at the right price. And most folks who had moved recently had reported difficulty in finding housing in this community. That was certainly corroborated by the employers that we talked to that are trying to hire people and fill positions. And the other point that I want to make about from the survey is that folks indicated that smaller homes, which is one way of helping to increase affordability, that they're generally okay with them, even homes that are under 1,500 square feet. So relatively small homes are acceptable to the workforce here. Just to recap findings of demand, we're talking, you know, around 3,000 total units between rental and for-sale that we think could be supported here over the next few years. Some of that includes recapturing people that are not, that are working here but not living here. Just from the announced job growth that's coming up from HEB, from state school, et cetera, we think there's going to be an additional 315 housing units that, that are needed. Emphasis on moderately priced rentals. We die, we, we really try to identify some of the challenges and the barriers that are hindering housing development in the area to keep it, that keep it from meeting the supply, to keep the supply from meeting demand. That includes limited availability of affordable land to develop on. The, the, the higher, relatively high cost of infrastructure and, and land development here due to topography and other reasons, as well as some of the, the lack of certain housing types that have been built in the last few decades and the difficulties of folks being able to qualify for mortgages or for rentals. There are some, some opportunities that the community needs to take advantage of to help create more workforce housing. The new development code is one of those opportunities. It's going to allow a greater range of housing types within the city. There are a lot of infill, underutilized or redevelopable infill sites that already have infrastructure. Those are really important opportunities to take advantage of. You have a significant amount of land that's in public or institutional or philanthropic ownership that could be provided at a lower cost for housing. And just the potential for partnerships with a lot of these other entities that may not have been involved in housing in Kerrville in the past. So to just very, to finish off with recapping the strategies that, that we identified for the city to undertake. Infill is, is, as I said, very important for both rental units, and those will be small-scale rental units that can easily fit in on some of these smaller sites in, in the middle of existing developed areas of the city. It could be accessory dwelling units, duplexes, triplexes, or small multifamily complexes, as all, as well as helping acquire some of those properties for single-family home development for for-sale housing or rental house, rental single-family as well. We think that preserving the existing stock of affordable rental housing or moderately priced rental housing that you do have is important. We recommend implementing some incentivized housing rehabilitation programs that would be attached to pricing or income, tenant income restrictions, as well as trying to attract opportunity investment that is meant to have long-term preservation of rental housing through things like housing conservancies or impact funds. We recommend supporting, when you do get applications for a low-income housing tax credit programs and you deem the, the project to be worthy, to be very vocal and enthusiastic in supporting those projects to help them compete at the state level, to be awarded those tax credits. It's such a very competitive process. One thing I didn't mention earlier, but is similar to this, we recommend also that the city consider creating a public facilities corporation that can partner with multifamily developers to develop mixed-income housing. This is something that is an increasing trend in Texas, and actually San Antonio's been one of the epicenters of that kind of development, those kinds of projects. And so we do recommend that as a potential strategy for adding more moderately priced rental housing. We also recommend that the city create and adopt an official incentive policy for ways that it can financially assist new housing development that falls within certain price ranges or is restricted to folks of certain, certain incomes. And this could be things like Chapter 380 agreements and neighborhood empowerment zones to help finance infrastructure or offer tax abatements or permit fee reductions. To wrap up, we again recommend using the land that is in city ownership or the ownership of educational or other institutions and philanthropic organizations to make a, this is where you can really develop a lot of housing potentially at scale and, and moderately priced housing at that because of the nature of the current ownership. Work to accommodate specialized renter populations, most notably the, the graduates of the rehabilitation programs that are in the area who have stayed in the community to work in your retail and hospitality industry, and thus are an important part of your, of your workforce, but have special housing challenges, and you'll have to develop partnerships to help address their specific needs as well. Review, even though you've just redone your development code, continue to review the, the code and your permitting and review processes to make sure you're not adding unnecessary housing costs to develop housing or consider where, where it does, where you do have fees or other things that could be relaxed for certain targeted types of, of housing, consider doing that. And lastly, have an effort that is a cooperative effort amongst the city, your employers, your financial institutions, the, the real estate and the development community to institute a cooperative housing navigation and financial education program that can help, help renters find available housing that is affordable to them, as well as educate and prepare entry-level home buyers to be able to get mortgage financing and compete out there in the market with investors, with retirees and so on, so that they have a better chance to get their start in the homeownership market. And that kind of very quickly recaps what was in our, our report, so.
Thank you, Steve. Counsel, do you have questions?
I have a quick question. I know you mentioned there were 720 need, need, people who need a rental, a place to rent. Does that include the 315 that will be coming with Hobby Lobby and the State Hospital?
No, that, that, those, that 750 renter households that are already cost burdened, those actually dates to 2017, I believe.
We're really talking about 1,000 then?
So, well, the 315-
Over a two-year period?
The 315 are going to need, yes, that, that's, that's based on, that's just total households that are going to be needed to be added to the stock here to help accommodate that growing workforce.
Not all of them would be rental, I know, but anyway.
Yeah. But most of them probably will be given the kinds of wages we're talking about it. And even folks that may make a little more that are coming in and want to buy, they're going to need a place to rent first.
Right.
And, and from what we've heard, those kind of folks are having just as hard a time finding that as everyone else.
I just want to say thank you and, and a lot of information that we, like we said, we kind of knew, but now we know.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
Ms. Clarkson?
Again, as I said earlier, thank you. I think this is, this is a great step for us. And I did want to just ask the city staff. So we have now been given a set of strategies to go along with the research. So I guess my question is, what does it mean to adopt this plan? And then what, what do we expect to happen if we adopt it? What, what comes next?
So I can take that one, Sherry. So Sherry has been working on with, with myself and EA, an implementation matrix similar to the one that you just saw with the Doyle Community Center or Kerrville 2050. But she went beyond that and she's married up the strategies out of Kerrville 2050 with this plan. And so it's one plan and it all works together. So we're still finishing that up and trying to sign, you know, who's responsible and timelines and so forth. We're glad to share that with you all, but that's basically going to be Sherry's work plan and the work plan of others as we move through the implementation.
And those come back for approval as well?
No, by approving this plan tonight, you're basically approving us to move forward, and that's more of an in-house, staff-driven document, which we're, you know, happy to share with you.
All right. Okay, if no other responses from counsel, we have speakers?
Yes, sir. Peggy McKay?
Peggy McKay, 103 West Chester, Kerrville. After listening to a lot of reports on the business channels, I'm hearing that affordable housing is a problem nationwide. It's not unique to Kerrville. But locally, I believe our appraisal district is working against what you all want to achieve. When they blanket areas, certain areas in town and raise the land prices. And in one particular area this year, the land prices went from $21,000 to $30,000. The lot sizes ranged from a size of 14 one-hundredths of an acre to a third of an acre. Regardless of the, um, the lot size or what was attractive for that house, they were all valued at $30,000. $14,000 or $30,000 for 14 one-hundredths of an acre, to me is, is an excessive amount. All these structures are in an average of $175,000 range, which is in that, I think it comes into the affordable housing range. But this works against it because this type of massive increase for this moderate home is not helping affordable housing. And I believe it's, it's, uh, it's not going to be helpful if it continues. This was a blanket area in this area, in this particular neighborhood, and I tried to check some others, but I ran out of time. But in this one neighborhood, I cannot see $30,000 for 1/14th of an acre lot. And I think something needs to be addressed with the appraisal district to, so that they can be helpful and work with you when you're trying to develop affordable housing and workforce housing.
Linda Bullard?
Linda Bullard, 916 Lazy Lane. I attended the meeting of the Senior Services Advisory Committee this afternoon to present an idea which I wanted to ask them to consider, and they suggested that I come here tonight and actually present it to you. And since it concerns a housing concern and issue that I have, I decided to present it in this agenda item rather than in the visitors forum. I appreciate the housing report, and I, I saw some, some framework there that could address my concern. So I feel good about that. But it's clear that, I mean, affordable housing is your priority. But within that, it seems that the workforce housing is key. And my concern is on, on affordable housing for a different part of the population. And everybody knows, it's clear from some of these reports, that Kerrville is a graying community. And afford, affordable housing for our seniors is what I'm concerned about and, and what my idea is about. So there's, I wanted to call your attention to something in the housing field which is trending throughout the country. I'm sure you've heard of it. But just last week, in the New York Times, there was a huge article about it. And a few months ago, in Money Magazine, there was also a feature art, article about it. And it's about new housing arrangements for seniors. So the New York Times article, "We Need Each Other." Seniors are drawn to new housing arrangements. And these arrangements are, um, group living arrangements that have been, that, that basically are a creative response to the, until now, about the only thing seniors, fit seniors, fit physically and mentally, have had is either aging in place, which has certain isolation problems, or going to independent living units, which tend to be, in some cases, quite expensive and ghettoized into senior communities and are causing our neighborhoods to actually lose their seniors who are valuable people. So, uh, so what I wanted to suggest is that this approach to senior group housing is another way to look at density in the community. That is to say, to use existing- That is to say, to use existing housing stock. Instead of making houses smaller and lots smaller, to take existing housing stock and use them more efficiently. And however, it needs some assistance, and you talked about this too, to bring the people who have the possibility to offer this housing with the seniors who are looking for it. There are, at least, there are numerous projects throughout the country. We don't have to reinvent the wheel. We can study these projects. And what I wanted to ask is that the city do that and ask themselves what they could do to, whether it would be through the Senior Advisory Services Committee or through some other mechanism, to create a network of matchups. So, and it's complicated because you need to vet, you need to prevent senior abuse and so on. And I have these two articles. I'm going to give them to the mayor and maybe you can share them and we can include this in the housing report.
Quick comment. It's common in this community, think of all senior adults being rich. The highest levels of poverty in Kerr County are women 55 and above.
Mr. Mayor, I would be interested in talking with Ms. Bullard and yourself a little bit more about that since I've gotten very interested in homeless and basically at-risk citizens. So, this kind of fits into some other things I've been thinking and I'd love to talk with you. Maybe we can look at some examples and come up with some more tangible ideas, but thank you.
Good.
Thank you. Bruce Stricki?
Bruce?
I think the report speaks very well, but I had to comment that.
Okay, okay. Do we have anyone else?
No, sir. That's all the speakers signed up.
Okay. In regard to the housing study and strategic plan, further comments or discussions?
I'll make a motion that we pass Resolution Number 42-2019, adopting the Curville Housing Study and Strategic Plan for 2019 for the City of Curville.
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion second. All those in favor, if you raise your hand. Okay. It passes unanimously. Now, Ms. McLean, if you will read in 7A.
Presentation regarding bond refunding opportunity.
Okay. Ms. Dozier?
Stand up for a minute.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. I'm here tonight-
Wait a minute, we're losing our consultant.
Safe travels.
I won't pick up. All right, I'm here tonight to introduce our financial advisor, Ann Berger Entrickin. She's here from Hilltop Securities and Ann's going to be presenting information regarding a possible debt refunding. There's no action to be taken on this tonight. This is just an informational presentation. With that, I'll turn it over to Ann.
Honorable Mayor and Council members, it's a pleasure to be back before you again this evening. As Ms. Dozier said, the reason I'm here this evening is to talk about what we call in the, in the muni world, a bond refunding, but really it's just the concept of refinancing, very similar to what you might do for a home, as we've been talking about. I wanted to give just a quick market update and you saw this when I was here not that long ago. This is the bond buyers index of 20 municipal bonds. And what is interesting, when I was here that evening, I talked about how it was lagging a little bit. If you look at it on the right-hand side, the most current number is 2.66. What is interesting is shortly after you had your bond sale, we saw interest rates go up slightly. Now, with what we saw happen with the equity markets a couple of weeks ago, losing significant value, as well as some of the other information about what's going on from an industrial perspective and, again, more geopolitical discussions, we have seen interest rates trail down over the last couple of days. Just again, showing it on a one-year basis, the 2.66, and still credit spreads have not changed very much. They are still very narrow from a historical perspective. To talk about the bonds that you have or that are soon to be callable. When we sell municipal bonds, generally you have, in Texas, it's a standard 10-year par call. Well, what we've been able to do over the last several years is actually have a nine-year call and that has been able to be done without any cost. And what that means, it's solely the city's discretion. You have the ability to pay off the bonds on the call date without any penalty at all, any day, and you can call them in full or in part. So, if we go back and we look at 2011A bonds, the original par amount was 3.5 million. There's about 2.4 million outstanding. The callable maturities are 2021 through 2031 and the interest rates were 2% to 3.5%. The call date is February 15, 2020. And I will tell you, at that time in 2011, when we saw those coupons ranging from 2% to 3.5%, we said, oh, you'll never refund these bonds. But there could be a potential opportunity to save money, given, again, we are now in what is really a historically low interest rate environment. So, what we've done is we have looked at, if you were to refund those bonds targeting upfront savings based on current market rates, we project that the refunding par amount would be about $2,225,000. On a gross basis, you would save just under $106,000. We're targeting the years where your debt service is a little bit higher before it falls off. So, the average annual savings in 2021 and 2022 in this scenario would be just under about $41,000. On a present value basis, that equals about $105,000. The benefit is 4.318% projected and that assumes a true interest cost of about 1.921. Because refundings are very sensitive to what's going on in the market, we wanted to also show you what happens if, based on the day that we looked at these, which was October 2nd, if interest rates went up 25 basis points or 1/4 of 1%, what does that do to the savings? So, your par amount remains about the same, but your gross savings declined to just under $74,000. You would save $25,000 in the two years that we are looking at and on a present value basis, a little bit below $70,000. Looking at it from a present value benefit, 2.871 and a true interest cost projected of 2.15%. So, looking at the timing considerations, you may recall, some of you, when I was here back in 2017, when we had the Tax Cuts and Job Act that went into effect, and what that did was that basically eliminated advanced refundings. So, what that means is now the only type of refinancings that can be done, have to be done on a callable, have to be done within 90 days of the call date if you want to do them on a tax-exempt basis. So, these bonds are callable on February 15, 2020. So, that means the first possible day that we could close would be Tuesday, November 19. And if we back up 28 days to allow for the sale of the bonds and the approval by the Texas Attorney General's Office, the first practical day that these could price would be October 17. As I said before, you can do them anytime up until the February 15, 2020, and you can even do them any day thereafter. But especially in this environment, you may want to try to consider thinking about the timing relative to doing that. The other thing that we wanted to visit about is, one of the roles that we have as your financial advisor, we are always looking to see not only what bonds are currently callable, but what bonds may be callable in the near term. So, if we go out and we also look at August 15 in 2020, you have two additional bond issues that will be callable at that time. Again, stepping back and looking at the timing, the first practical time that you could price those would be the middle of April, closing towards the end of May, to be in that 90-day requirement. And to go back and look at those, your 2012 was just under nine point, or just over 9.9 million. There's about six and a half left. The callable maturities are 2021 through 2032. Those coupons range from 2% to 2.5% and the call date is noted is 8/15/2020. You also have the 13 bonds, which were 10 million, about 6.9 million outstanding, pretty much the same callable maturities, except it extends one more year. Those coupons range from 1.5 to 2.75 and they're callable on the same date. And so, what we actually found is we have been doing nine-year calls for a while, but in 2013, we had a really interesting market and we were able to do an eight-year call without there being a penalty. So, that's why you have bonds from 2012 to 2013, but they have the same call date and that's an analysis that we do with every bond sale. So, in summary, the current market, certainly near historical lows, we're just really a few basis points off of that. You've got one opportunity now to currently refund for savings and you could potentially have more in the next several months. If there's, as Ms. Dozier said, there's no formal action this evening, but if the council has interest in pursuing this, then what we do is we would come back at a formal meeting and we would ask you to consider what we call a parameters ordinance. And as I noted, showing the difference in what the savings are with current market and current market plus 25 basis points, refundings are very, very sensitive to what's going on in the market. So, what we do generally for Texas cities is we use a parameters ordinance. And what, in that, we come to you and it basically, we define what is the maximum principal amount that the bond issue can be? What is the maximum interest cost? What is the maximum final maturity? And what is the minimum debt service savings? So, we basically put in the corral that in order for this to be able to move forward, every one of those four parameters must be met. And it gives us the flexibility to access a market quickly. To give an example, one of the other communities I work with, right after the city council approved the parameters ordinance, interest rates moved up significantly. When we were supposed to price the bonds, we would not have met all four parameters. And so, we basically put it on a week-by-week. We looked at it and about three months later, we had a really nice dip in the interest rate environment. All the work had been done. We were able to jump in very quickly and come back with savings that were greater than what we had told council. So, basically, a parameters ordinance just gives you flexibility, but also gives us guidance in understanding what are the minimum thresholds. So, when you go through that process, if it's something you're interested in, I'll talk about it a little bit more, but that delegation is ultimately given to the mayor, the city manager and/or the chief financial officer, so we have some flexibility at that time. And so, with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Ms. Entrickin, why would we not do this?
Mayor, I do not see a compelling reason not to move forward. You know, one of the things, it is not a significantly large transaction, but one of the things I talked to Ms. Dozier about is, we just finished a disclosure document. There's very little updating that would be required. She just went through, along with the city manager, a very extensive process with Standard Empores to get the rating. Well, just because we recently went through that and this is a refinancing for savings, I believe that that process would be much more streamlined, maybe even just sending them information and a quick phone call. So, I think that we can hopefully try to minimize some of the timing requirements that would normally be associated with a bond issue by virtue of the fact that we just recently completed one. So, Mayor, we tried to take that into consideration in visiting with staff about this.
Okay, one other question, then other council members jump in. How long have you worked for the City of Curville?
So, we went back and I need to double-check it, but I believe we were engaged in 1988 or '89.
So, you know this city?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Ms. Carter? Ms. Carlson? Ms. Clarkson?
It sounds like it's something we should pursue.
Yeah, okay.
I'm in awe of you.
Okay, so, we do not vote, but you hear an affirmative response.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, good.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Have a nice evening.
Thank you.
All right, 8A, and we're nearing the end.
Appointments to the Curville Area Youth Leadership Academy and I do have one citizen speaker signed up.
Okay. Somehow, I don't have the info on this.
You want to take mine?
Yeah. Okay, thank you. All right. Oh, got you, okay. Any discussion on this, on this item from the council? Okay, all right. We have a speaker?
Yes, sir. Roman Garcia.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, Counsel, thank you. So, several youth, including former members of the Curville Youth Advisory Committee, also known as Kayak formerly, contacted me with questions regarding the new concept of CAILA, hoping that I guess I might have the answers to, since I was the chair, former chair of Kayak, but I didn't. And some of my friends who are interested in this item are actually watching this meeting live. They just texted me that they're watching it and they gather, so I'm hoping to get some of their questions answered. So, for all the questions, I guess I'd ask that we assume that the applicants who are being considered are approved and appointed to this group. So, are they being, are the applicants being appointed to like a board committee or a commission under the city council? And how's that going to work?
Yes.
Is it still considered?
Ms. Meisner?
No.
CAILA this year will be part of a, more like a academy, a leadership academy, rather than a board commission.
Okay, all right.
Okay, and I did ask Mrs. Meisner that question, but there was some information that we found that, they asked me to bring this up again. The item is on the agenda as board appointments, so that's why they were wondering. In the CAILA packet also, it sets a membership term, a quorum, and it says, quote, "Committee members appointed by city council," end quote, "will occur today on October 8." So, I assume that that considers it a board or committee. And CAILA is also listed as a board or a commission on the city's website. So, that's why I wanted to get some clarification. So, it's not a board or committee, because now there's some mixed information.
Ms. Meisner?
So, I'd like Mike to answer that, actually, because Mike's given us counsel on that.
Yeah, I mean, it's, this year it's going to be set up, I think, similar to Leadership Crew County, an academy for this group, and that's staff's intent. And I think, what I've heard is these applicants are excited about it, so.
Yeah, invite them to come next time.
Absolutely. And then a couple more. So, then assuming that it's not a board anymore, they won't have to follow the procedure rules for boards, right?
No, they do.
They would still will?
No. I'm sorry.
No, it's just an academy led by staff and-
Okay. And then that was going to, kind of what he said, led by staff. So, will the applicants be able to elect their chair, vice chair, secretary, other officers previously?
No.
Okay, and then who will lead the meetings? Will the applicants, since there will not be? If they're going to be like meetings and stuff?
Meisner?
She will.
Okay, and then their last question, will the applicants be able to choose their own events or programs to participate in, or will they be required to follow the schedule provided in the packet? And I assume it's this one that she asked about.
Because it will be set up as a leadership academy and things will be provided for you.
So, they won't be able to provide their own input on programs and activities to participate in?
No.
Okay. That's unfortunate because they were hoping to bring a lot of ideas and stuff to that. And they were just, I was just talking to one of them about the other day, about other ideas that they'd have for that. So, it seems unfortunate that it's no longer kind of what it was and there are some members who are excited about it and some are who probably didn't apply, I don't know for sure, who are disappointed on the way it was. And it looks like there's still a little bit of confusion between city council and staff on what this really is. So, I just ask that, you know, let me clear that up.
Okay. Ms. Garcia, I've got a question for you.
Yes, sir.
The last time you appeared before council-
Yes, sir.
And we did not do what you wanted to do in regard to the selection of outside council. You posted that night an Instagram that was either from Plato or Aristotle, that people who do not involve themselves in politics then have to suffer being ruled by inferiors.
Yes, sir.
And you had a picture of us here at the DIAS.
Yes, sir.
What did you mean?
I meant that it is good to be involved in local government. Otherwise, if you do not involve yourself, there's probably going to be things that you do not want. And it was just a quote. I found, I've used that with a lot of my friends and I think it's really good encouragement to show them that you should participate in government.
Yeah, you can understand that it would be easily interpreted that you were saying- Yeah, you can understand that it would be easily interpreted that you were saying that the council are a bunch of inferiors.
If, I mean, it's a perspective kind of thing, but none of the members who know that, I posted that, thought that.
Well, I'm agreeing, so what is your opinion?
Well, I do not believe that this is a...
Do you consider us inferior to you?
Well, I don't believe this is a discussion under this item, so I'd be more than happy to discuss that with you at a later time, but it doesn't seem to be appropriate right now.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, could you provide the names of the others so that we could reach out to them and get their ideas and thoughts?
I would have to ask their permission to give that out, but I'd be more than happy to ask them right now.
Well, I will give you my, my information. It has my cell phone, it has my email address, and I would, like, rather than hearing through you, like, and not hearing exactly what you're talking about, maybe some specifics and some names to go along with that.
Sure.
Because I'm interested in, I'm very interested in youth, and I do want to hear what engaged citizens are saying, so...
I have the six people named here, so I'll contact them afterwards, and I'll ask them if they're okay with me giving that information.
Or have them contact me directly, whatever it is.
Okay, absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Do we have further discussion in regard to the Youth Leadership Academy? Okay, do I hear a motion?
I move that we accept the names. We probably should read them, you know, have yours. For the class of 2019, 2020, Kennedy Cooley, Don Forrester, Danielle Garcia, Gage Reed, Carliapi Serrano, Kayla Wilson, and Ryanne Wilson.
All right, okay. You got a motion and a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, all right. All in favor of that, those board appointments, if you let it be known by the raised hand, and it is unanimous. Okay, items for future agendas. All right. I assume we don't need an executive session tonight. Okay, all right. We are adjourned at 8:15.